All right, it's a few minutes past the hour, so we're going to call this hearing to order. Can you hear me? Check, check, check. Is that better? Right there? Oh, okay. Yeah, we're really close. All right. We are going to call this meeting to order. Thank you. All right. So I'm going to start with just a few announcements here. First of all, if you are interested in seeing a video of the hearing from last Thursday, it is available on the Northwest Public Access website, on their YouTube site, and you can get links to those sites, or at least one of those sites, from the town website. So if you want access to that, you can have it there.
Charlie, Anita Woodworks says she don't have the link to get on.
She's on.
Oh, she is on now?
Yeah, she's left-hand corner.
Okay, she just emailed.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Yep, thanks.
All right, so a few things. If you haven't attended prior hearings, or at least the last one, and especially if you were not here at town meeting, just to set the rules of how this hearing will be conducted, it's going to be conducted as if we are in town meeting and as if we have a motion on the floor for debate. So essentially, this is an informational meeting, but we're going to conduct it as if we are having public debate as per town meeting rules. So the way those rules work, first of all, please do not address each other. We are trying to avoid one-on-one direct conversations, so all comments and questions need to be directed to the moderator. If there is a question for the select board, you can direct it to the moderator, and then we'll give the select board an opportunity to respond if they choose. Please refrain from using profanity, insults, name-calling. This needs to remain a civil and respectful debate. Thank you for your consideration. Let's see. Is there anyone here who is not on the voter checklist for Montgomery? Okay, great. So only people who are on the voter checklist in Montgomery are allowed to speak. We're not taking any action tonight, so there's no need to worry about voting and authorization around voting. But if anyone has a question for Walt that they want Walt to answer, or Walt, if you choose to speak, we will need to give permission as a body of the voting public to acknowledge a guest to be able to speak. Everyone will have 10 minutes to speak. I'll do my level best to keep track of that. I would like everyone who wants to have the opportunity to speak tonight to speak. There's going to be no call for adjournment or anyone trying to end the debate or the conversation early. So everyone who wants to speak will be able to speak. I'm going to ask everyone who wants to speak first has a chance to speak before anyone gets to speak a second time. I know some of you have very strong feelings and have a lot to say. We want to make sure that everyone's voice has an opportunity to get heard and everyone's questions have an opportunity to be asked and addressed. Here's how the run of show is going to work. I'm going to start by reading out the article that is under consideration for the vote on April 1st. That's what we're discussing tonight. So I'll read that article in its entirety. The petitioner or representative of the group of petitioners will then have the first opportunity to speak and will have 10 minutes to speak in support of the article that is under consideration. The select board will then have an opportunity to speak and address their considerations on the article, and then we will open up for public conversation. I'm going to remind us in the room that there are people from the Zoom community with us here via screen. So to make sure that they can hear us and we can hear them, one, obviously, please be quiet while they're speaking so that we can all hear. It's a little bit harder with the speakers. Two, when you address the room, I know it's awkward and feels a little uncomfortable, but I'm going to ask you to speak into those microphones because it's the only way people on Zoom are going to be able to hear. So it's for their benefit that they hear what you have to say to use the microphone. So thank you in advance for that. I know it's not the most comfortable process. And if there are people in Zoom world who would like to speak, please raise your hand. There's a raise-your-hand function. At the bottom of your Zoom window, you'll see a little React button. You can hit that button. It gives you the opportunity to raise a hand. That will allow Charlie Hancock, the chair who was monitoring the Zoom, to flag my attention. We can call on that person. If you're on Zoom, please stay muted. Stay on mute so we're not listening to your side conversations until it's your turn to speak. When it is your turn to speak, please unmute so that we can hear you. All right. I think that's all we need to say before we get going here. So I'm going to read out the article as warned so we all know exactly what we're talking about. "So in accordance with 17 VSA 2645, we, the undersigned legal voters of Montgomery, hereby petition the select board to properly warn and hold for a vote at a special town meeting on April 1st, 2025, the following articles to wit." No problem. Article 1. Shall the voters of Montgomery adopt an amendment to the town charter that strikes, annuls, and repeals Section 3 of the town charter in its entirety and rescinds the local option tax as it is set forth in state hearing? So I'm now reading the text that the article is suggesting or is in favor of rescinding. So this is the existing charter that the article is saying should be cut. "Section 3 of the town charter provides: A) The select board is authorized to impose a 1% sales tax, a 1% meals and alcoholic beverages tax, and a 1% rooms tax upon sales within the town that are subject to the state of Vermont tax on sales, meals, alcoholic beverages, and rooms. B) A tax imposed under the authority of this section may be rescinded and shall be collected and administered pursuant to 17 VSA 138, provided that the town shall: (1) receive on a quarterly basis not less than 70% of the tax collected less the per-return fee; (2) not more than 70% of the per-return fee; (C) The tax to be paid to the town shall be set in the sewer reserve fund to assist in the repayment of debt obligations related to the construction of a municipal wastewater system in Montgomery Center and Village; (D) The taxes authorized by this section shall expire 90 days after the date that the town has fully repaid the debt obligations related to the construction of the municipal wastewater system in Montgomery Center and Village." So the article is to rescind that local option tax in the charter. Article 2 of the warning. Shall the voters of Montgomery adopt an amendment to the town charter as follows: "Any owner of a property that is serviced by a wastewater system not deemed to be failed as defined by 10 VSA 1972-5 can opt out of connecting to any municipal wastewater system, and in so doing, the owner of said property shall remain responsible for only the same costs, taxes, assessments, levies, fees, and alike attributable to properties that are not served by any municipal wastewater system. Notice of opting out is satisfied by delivering a simple written notice to the town clerk." So those are the articles under consideration. I'll now recognize a representative from the petitioners group to speak for 10 minutes in support of the article. Is there a point of order?
I think it might be a point of order that since there isn't a select board quorum here right now, is this like a qualifying legal?
Well, so my understanding is we're not taking any action this evening. This is purely an informational hearing, so there isn't a quorum required to conduct official town business. Charlie, am I right in that?
Yeah. Yeah, because there's no official business being conducted and no official act are being taken. There's no quorum required. And because it's not a meeting of the select board, we don't need to have a quorum to essentially have a meeting. So just because there's two of us up here, these have all been warned as select board meetings like because we could have a quorum. But no, we don't need a quorum to hold it here.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it wouldn't come back later.
Yep. No, great question.
Thank you for asking the questions. All right. Is there, barring any other points of information, if there is someone from the petitioners group that would like to speak?
My question is if this is an informational hearing and not a select board hearing, why do we have a moderator? We have to go through it.
The moderator is... Oh, would you like to speak to that, Charlie? Oh.
As you said, the moderator was requested by the petitioners to have that at these hearings, which is why I came upstairs.
It was a request by the petitioner?
Which one?
Mike.
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 Thank you.
You're welcome. Would someone from the petitioner group like to speak? Great. If you could please use the mic so that people from Zoom can hear you. You have 10 minutes.
Thank you.
A point of order.
Yes.
Can he speak to the people instead of speaking to you seeing as this is an informational meeting and we're trying to present information? It's not going to be a debate.
Yeah.
Because the select board doesn't speak to you when they speak. They speak to the people.
It's a great question, and I appreciate it. So the reason that I'm up here this evening is because in addition to requesting that the moderator run the meeting, it was also requested that we run the meeting according to town meeting rules. And so this was a request from the petitioner that was held in the town meeting. I can't remember the date. And so we're honoring the petitioner's request that a moderator host the hearing and that it be run like a town meeting. And so I'm honoring the request of the petitioners to conduct a meeting in that way. The way these town meetings work is that everything is addressed to me because we're trying to avoid conflict and direct debate between people in a public forum. It's a mechanism I'm trying to preserve decorum. Everyone will be able to hear everything that everyone is saying. And so when you're maybe looking at me or addressing your comments to me, the expectation is that everyone hears it. It is for the public's consumption and that everyone has the right to respond to anything that anyone has said. It's a matter of trying to diffuse direct conflict and direct oppositional conversation between people and having a debate devolve into like one-on-one conversations without any control over the conversation. So that's the intent. And again, we're honoring the request of the petitioner.
What if we just take the microphone and put it where he is right there, and then he's addressing you and us at the same time?
I have no problems about where the microphone is placed. I could care less about that.
The camera just needs to see you. That's the main thing. If you want the camera to be able to be positioned to see the folks talking so the folks on Zoom can have a visual. So if folks want to turn this way or that way, I mean, it's not...
I have no problem taking five minutes if it's... Okay, so the important thing around the camera is that there are people at home that want to participate, and we're trying to maintain access for everyone to participate as well as for people to be able to review this in the future. If we want to take five minutes or 10 minutes and reposition things so that whoever's speaking can have eye contact with people in the room, I'm totally fine with that.
So then that one would work better and just keep you have easier time to hanging back in the room?
Yeah, and also because we have to... Because one mic is for the room and one is for the Zoom. We have two mics. So it's not like the town meeting, we can pass it around one mic, and two, it just gets awkward, which is why we're trying to have them in one space. But we could certainly... I mean, Will, you could slide this way a little, and the mics could come here. Yeah, yeah. So Will, like if you went here...
Jacob.
Okay. Or you could push me farther back.
Yeah, it's okay. I just need to be looking at him.
As long as the folks at home can see and we can hear with both mics. And just also, when you do speak into the mics, just get real close, like get real personal with it.
And I really understand and acknowledge this sort of awkwardness and formality of this. I know it's not like a natural way to have a town conversation. Part of what has led to this request and the reason we're following this format is because the elevated degree of contention that has been surrounding this issue. And so this is a mechanism of trying to make sure everyone has a chance to speak. There's no direct conflict. Everyone can hear at home. The whole thing gets recorded. But yes, I think... Does this satisfy the general consensus here?
Yes.
Excellent. Terrific. Okay. Any other further points of information or how we conduct the meeting?
Just ask the folks on Zoom if they can't hear at any point. Please just make that...
So people in Zoom, if you cannot hear what is happening at any point, take yourself off of mic and say that you can't hear, and we will do our absolute best to adjust that. And again, I'm going to ask those of you that are using the mics, I know it's awkward, but to make sure that everyone can hear, please just speak right up into the mic. If we need to raise or lower mics a little bit, we can... Yeah, that's exactly how you do it. That's great. Okay. Barring any other points of information or requests, we'll now recognize Peter to speak for 10 minutes.
Thank you, Jacob.
Up to 10 minutes. You don't have to speak for all 10 minutes.
No, no. Thank you for my 10 minutes. I've got... My first question is a request to clarify how the local options tax that was passed at town meeting affects the Article 1 of the local options tax that's in place or was in place under the charter. My gist of the question is that is the Article 1 on the petition vote still valid? Charlie?
Yeah.
Do you want... Actually, let me ask you a question. Would you like to continue with anything else? Or do you want to stop?
Yeah, no, I want to continue after the answer.
Okay. I will pause your time.
Clarity, I have a question.
Charlie, do you want to respond to the question?
Yeah, thank you for the question. So the Article 1 on the April 1st vote, is it still valid question? It would rescind the local option tax portion of the charter and remove it from our town charter? So we would still have a affirmative action of removing it. In practice, as far as having local option tax goes in the community, we would still have the local option tax because the town voted to institute a local option tax outside of the charter at town meeting, which is allowable now with changes in statute made last year on legislature. So we have a local option tax that is based on rooms and meals that is going to stay outside the charter. The vote on April 1st would still remove that language from the charter. So that makes sense.
Yeah, it does. So then effectively, the Article 1 on the petition vote really has the net effect of just getting rid of that charter local options tax altogether versus it coming back in three years and you getting rid of it. Select board getting rid of it at that time.
Charlie, do you want to confirm or deny or clarify?
Yes, just a point of caution. The select board can't unilaterally remove something from a charter. That has to be done by affirmative vote from a strongly valid elected electorate. So whether the local option tax article in the charter gets removed on April 1st or we handle this at a future date, that would happen at some point. The legislature gave towns three years suspension window to essentially go back and clean up a charter if they went through the process that we went through. So we have three years to do it, whether that happens on April 1st or it happens next year or the year after or whenever.
Thank you, Charlie. Now to broader points. This petition was gathered up once and then a second time to be valid. It was gathered up in light of several requests for a revote given the clearly different parameters of the project that were refused by the select board or not addressed, taken up by the select board. This... There's a lot of discourse about our ability to opt out through this second, I guess, Article 2 of the petition. And I would like to clear up. People say you don't have an option to opt out. I believe that this gives us an option to do that. If it is voted and approved, then whoever wants to opt out with a working system can do so. My question is, I would like not to support any perception that this is kind of a hollow vote. It's not. It's a very important vote in that it is the remaining at bat to pause this project for reconsideration, if you will. So I would like to dispel all rumors, if you will, that people can't opt out. They can vote to opt out. If a majority does that, then they're free to opt out and not replace a perfectly working system. So just to make that point clear, anyone watching or reading or seeing the Zoom later needs to know that they can vote to support opt-out. And that's really my point. That's it. It's a valid article. And you're telling me Article 1 is of... Select board's telling me through Charlie that it's a valid Article 1 as well. So please treat this seriously. It's your last chance to weigh in. If you choose to continue opposing this project for want of better clarity on what happens on the back end, there are some steep expenses that are documented in other towns that have adopted these kinds of projects that really, in my opinion, haven't been addressed adequately, and they should be because we're on the hook as taxpayers. I thank you for your time and whatever remains. Thank you.
Representative Select Board, like to have the second comment?
Sure, Jacob. Yeah. What Peter said is, you know, I'm going to represent spot on in that Article 2 is real and it has a real impact. So, you know, it's not just an exercise in casting a ballot. The reason why the board has for years now put forward the position that we need everybody connected to the system in the system area is because without everybody on the system, we lose the economic scale, which makes the user rates more horrible. If we build a system that serves the area and there's perforations within it, holes, users not attached to it, in order to build a system to serve the area, it still needs to be the same system. So it's kind of costs a certain amount of money. And with the monies going to support the system coming from the local option tax and the user fees, we need the user base to be big enough to make those individual user fees affordable and make this work. And that affordability of the user fees has been the guidance for the board for years now. So yes, it is real. There is a reason why the board has been saying that we need a law of the Biden by working to require connections. I understand the position on the opposite side of that. It's a valid position. But the reason why we are looking to require a opt-in is because we need that economy of scale of users to keep those user fees affordable. As to better clarity on the back end of things, yeah, I mean, I might sound like a rogue record, but... Sorry. I might sound like a rogue record, but the numbers we're working with right now are estimates. They're best estimates based on plans and the cost centers that we know. But we're not going to have the, what we'll call the real numbers back until we get the bids back. And those are the numbers that we can respond to. And so that's when we're going to have the real numbers plugged into the framework to see how it works with the funding stack we've got. And that's the point when we'll stop and say, does this still work? Are we needing that affordability metric in user fees that we set for ourselves? So I would say, yes, there is still some uncertainty, and we try to be clear as possible that that uncertainty exists until we get these bids back. Because we have seen this happen projects across Vermont very widely from the original estimates for a number of reasons. And now we throw on top of it the tariffs for Canada where some of the materials will be coming from. And what's going to be the impact of that? So there are things that are still happening. None of this is going to be set in stone. So I just want to say that, you know, a lack of certainty around some of these numbers shouldn't be taken for a lack of transparency or a lack of like, we're never going to know stuff. We don't know until we get those bids back. As far as unaddressed expenses, you know, I think what I just said covers most of that. If there are any direct questions about current estimates, we're happy to answer those questions tonight if folks does do have one. So we'll stop there.
Okay. All right. At this point, we'll invite people to speak. And I guess, let's do it this way. We're not nearly as large of a group as we were on Tuesday. So raise your hand if you would like to speak, and I will try to call on people in the order that I see you. I'm going to ask you, when I call on you, to come up and use the mic so that people on Zoom can hear you. And I'll ask you to start by introducing yourself by your name so that everyone knows for the record who is speaking.
Excellent. Tosca Smith.
Just so they can hear, make sure you get close to the mics.
Oh, mics.
It's actually okay. The audio pulls pretty good.
Yeah, audio pulls good, good.
Okay, great.
At the last hearing, I brought up a point that I'm going to hammer again, but just be real straightforward about. This building that we all use, all of us, has a failed septic system. Under that parking lot in 2002, I put maybe 30-foot perforated pipe in with four sheets of pink insulation to service this building and the snowshoe. So my question to the opposition, the opposing faction here, is how do you know your system is working? Every time the toilets flush in this building, I cross my fingers because I know that our leach field is under a parking lot. I know that Trout River Traders leach field is under Lutz's parking lot because I occupied that building for two years. I know that the snowshoe spent a lot of money putting a closed system in. That is not a septic system. He pays every month to have it pumped. I know that the red house next to Trout River Traders has a leach field under the road behind it. I know that John Chamberlain's house has a leach field in the inn's yard. I know that Darren Drevick, one of his houses, has a leach field under the road. I know all this because I've lived in this town for a really long time, and I have been trying to get septic in the downtown Main Street for over 25 years. I appreciate everybody being afraid of development, but my direct question to the opposition is, I would like a real specific answer from somebody, not just, we can get overdeveloped. We're going to be like Morrisville. Where exactly do you envision taking Abe and Walt out of the equation? That 16 and 1/2 acres can be developed without a septic system. They are within their rights, as our town permits right now, to develop that land and put their own system in. So installing a septic that is going to help over 10 abandoned, empty, and falling down houses, those homeowners will have an opportunity to finally either sell those properties. And I'm just really wanting... I drive up and down and go, where? I get that some of the homes on Main Street could be turned into duplexes. There's quite a few multifamily units in this town. There always has been. So I really want to hear where an 800 or 500 or 200 unit something is going to go. And that would be my question to the folks that oppose helping people on Main Street that are trying to do business and expand their businesses. At Trout River Traders, I routinely sat 150 people in that building knowing full well I was breaking the law. My occupancy for that building was 35 seats because of the lack of septic. I know Lily. She wants to serve dinner. She cannot. And John, I'm sorry, he put in a system, but he still only has 66 seats with that system. And we know that he can fit more and does fit more. And we know that he can fit more and does fit more. So answer me, please, what is the big fear about becoming 30 years? We were afraid 242 would turn into Stowe Mountain Road. 30 years, the biggest development is Crofters Green, Shady Acres. Amon would never do that again. It took forever to get his septic approved and in, and a ton of money. Why hasn't anybody come to Montgomery in the last 30 years and bought 10-acre lots and put dollar stores in and restaurants and bars? Why? There's a reason. We just don't have the topography or the geographical spread to put anything. Where's it going to go? That is my question for the opposition and why you think it's okay to really want to stop something that is going to help people that have been trying to do business in this town for years and not been able to legally add an extra seat because of the limitations of their septic systems, which are all under asphalt, literally, or in somebody else's yard. So that's the point of putting this system in. That's my rant.
Yes, you're recognized. Coming up to the mic and state your name.
My name is Kim Morrell, and I'm going to kind of respond to some of what Tosca brought up, and if I'm wrong, then I'm open to being corrected. Because if my perception is misconstrued, then it's misconstrued. But at the same time, it sounds like this system has been needed for a really long time. And I can't deny the case that Tosca lays out. It's needed. I'm definitely not denying that. But in the 30 years that the town of Montgomery has needed a wastewater system, the state has never before been knocking on our door, begging us to take state and federal funding money to get that done for the 97 to 100 homes and businesses that need it. In the big scheme of things, that's not a high priority at a state or a federal level. But with the new programs that came in after this process was started, two and a half years into the wastewater discussion here in Montgomery, a lot changed. And so when you say, where are these buildings going to go? I've looked at the funding stack, and two of the five sources of funding are directly tied to increased development in rural towns specifically to bear the burden of the overflow in city centers. And that's a direct quote from the governor. And so the purpose is to do multi-use, high-density infill housing. And they can fit that in however they need to, because once you're entered into this program, a lot of the rulings around local zoning do change. And right now, we're also looking at our zoning and changing the zoning. And the zoning from what it is now for village is what they're proposing that we do, that we just had an open forum for, was increase our village zoning by over 500% of the land mass of what it is right now. And that would mean that anything within a quarter mile of anything designated as a village zone in the zoning book could be part of this development program. It doesn't have to be within reach of the sewer. But once the wastewater is in, we are in a different bucket when it comes to development, state development, subsidized housing. And they're going up everywhere. I don't know how anyone can drive anywhere outside of town limits and not see all of the buildings that are going up. They're being put everywhere. They're in St. Albans, they're in Jericho, they're in Underhill. Fairfax is a great example. Now granted, that's a big open field, and it's flat, but that whole development, that whole community of buildings went up, well, to me, it's overnight because I don't drive that way very often. So I went there one time and there was nothing. I went the next time and there was an entire development with a lot of units. I'm not even going to just guesstimate because I have no idea, but a lot. And they're looking to increase housing. And so when I first moved here and drove down Main Street, I said, what a quaint little town. And then I was like, it would be so great if there were more places where we could go down with the kids and like have lunch at a sandwich shop and walk. So I'm not against development. My fear is that if we take this program and throw ourselves into a different bucket, I feel like we're at risk of losing some of the things that are so valuable, which is that quaint, cute, rural little town with individual family homes, duplexes, whatever. I came here to move away from, you know, the large story buildings. I am not saying that Walmart is going to put up a store in the middle of downtown Montgomery. I am not saying that we're going to have a Dollar General and a Family Dollar and a McDonald's and a Burger King. But I am saying we're going to have buildings that I feel like personally are out of place in this small town that I moved to.
Charlie, would you like to comment?
I just have a question, in case you, if you will, you can. You mentioned that--
Charlie--
I'm sorry.
You need to address me.
Apologies. I have a question to petitioners, if they're able to answer or willing to answer. It's been stated that two of the funding sources, I forget how it's phrased, two of the funding sources are directly tied to promoting high-density development in rural communities or shifting populations to rural communities. I'm just trying to think about the funding sources, and if you could please just articulate which funding source you're pointing to as being the one that is tied to that, that would help understand. And then these programs have come up in reference to these programs the state has to do this, to encourage this. And I'm just curious what the programs are specifically, so that when we talk about these things, we can be as explicit as possible. So if it is possible, I would love to hear more about what specific funding sources are concerned and what specific programs folks are pointing to as being part of these efforts by this administration or the legislature. And then I will just say, I completely agree with the statements around rural character and, you know, the things that make Montgomery Montgomery. You know, through the changes that have happened, we still have the ability for site plan review, certain things would still have conditional use review, you know, the planning commission and through our zoning bylaws, we still have influence over what development looks like in town. There are certainly specific things that have changed, but I will go back to the analysis that both our zoning administrator did and additional planning did. And again, this is their words, not mine. Quote, "In short, this is not a major shift for Montgomery and nothing in the Home Act of what Act 211 will prevent Montgomery from regulating how development occurs." So it's not to say that there's nothing that's changed, but what has changed, given our current zoning, is not a overly significant change, and we still retain the abilities through things like site plan review to address the concerns around character of development similarly to restore preservation of developments. It's still remaining out of control. So thank you.
I'll give Kim or someone from the petitioners group the opportunity to respond to those
So let's see. In regard to the funding pieces, the ARPA funds, I believe, are not part of that. The ARPA funds were the post-COVID monies that were being spread out throughout. But the pieces of the funding that come through the Rural Development Program do have stipulations about development tied to them. And the funds that come from the AC, the Chamber, hang on. Of course, you caught me on a night when I don't have any notes with me. I've been crawling around in the mud. The Vermont Agency of Chamber and Commerce, the funding that comes through that source also is very specific to furthering development. And then as far as the programs, I feel like it's a little evasive because I know that the programs are very specific and they were designed. And the last time that we had a public forum, the chairman of the Select Board said that he was on the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, which played a vital role or a key role or a part of actually developing the tier system that's being implemented through the state. So I feel like you're probably more familiar, the chairman is probably more familiar with those programs than I could ever claim to be. But again, this is all available on the Northwest Regional Planning website with the four or five different village designation programs, each having a very specific set of criteria that towns can move towards and going down the checklist of what a municipality has to do. And the municipality has a 90-something-page handbook on how to navigate this system to get funding and modernize and expand rural towns, which I have not read all of, but I have perused through it. And we're doing it. Like, we are in Montgomery in the process of doing it in multiple different phases. But the Select Board has one rule that they're working on over here, the Planning Commission is working on another piece over here, and Northwest Regional Planning is really helping drive the process and guide it. Because that's what their job is, is to help small towns move forward. But I just feel like we're only being given the little pieces without the actual end goal and what that picture looks like being given to us as a whole picture so that people understand that, yes, we're taking this step here and this step here and all the benefits of all these little steps along the way, but where that's going to land us at the very end game of all of that. I think those were the specific questions.
Thank you. You have a opportunity to clarify or respond?
Thank you. So, yes, so ACCD stands for the Agency of Commerce and Community Development. There's so much pepper in the soup down there, though, so I hope things can be hard to track. But so ACCD did provide a million dollars in the funding stack to this project through the Community Recovery and Revitalization Program. That is ARPA money. It is just funneled through ACCD. And ACCD's purpose and existence is to promote community development for businesses and housing. So yes, through that capacity, ACCD's money is tied, the intent of it is to create more economic activity, housing and business development. I will clarify, so just to be clear, so I do sit on the Board of Directors for the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. The league does a lot of advocacy around municipal issues. The work that I did around the Act 250 process and the changes that were included in Act 21, that was a separate summer study committee I would have to serve on in my capacity as a natural resource professional. And that's what developed the Tier 1, 1A will be, 203 system. So those are just separate, just so it's clear. The LCP does not do that. That was a separate group. So try to clarify those things. To the programs that keep getting brought up, because the state does have a number of programs, that look at things like village designation, downtown designation, neighborhood development districts, these are things that regional planning can help communities go after and achieve. A lot of those things, the purpose behind them is to provide things like tax incentives to communities or other kind of benefits that come with being in the program. But I will just, I will say that all of these programs are voluntary. So we currently have a village designation here right now. That is a voluntary designation the community entered into. And, you know, we can make this public for folks, but I will direct members of the Planning Commission to, an email thread that happened through the course of last week between, it looks like at the end of it, the entire Planning Commission was copied. There was only, it looks like, one member on the front end of it. But Emily Klaft goes through all of these points and addresses these concerns, and the punchline is, all of this is optional. All of this is stuff that is well within our control as to whether we should pursue it or not. So again, we can make this analysis public if it would help folks. We can publish the whole email chain. I know that there was some resistance by at least some of the commission to not discuss this in public, whether or not do it in the public distraction that would be associated with a scheduled slash warned meeting. So, you know, we can have these conversations in public, we can get this information out there, but that email thread kind of addresses all of these questions about the programs. And again, just the bottom line is, these are all optional programs. They're not programs that are being forced on the community. They're not anything that they can come in and make us do. They are things that, again, through the Planning Commission, the town has the option to opt into.
Another option to respond?
I just got a mic round, so I have to turn it to hear Charlie a little better. Got it. I just want to question that last statement about the programs being optional, because Emily actually, Klaft from Northwest Regional Planning Commission, actually did state, for a period of time, she was very vague and had a lot of confusion around what the programs were going to look like, because as the calendar year changed over, a lot of the language and the names of the programs changed. But she actually did say very clearly that when the zoning is changed and it meets the criteria, that the town of Montgomery is automatically submitted into two of the programs for review to see if we would be accepted. And that then the town, the municipality, has the option, if we meet the criteria, to apply the town to other designation programs. So I don't know which two were automatically applied for, but two of the four or five are automatic, and then the others are optional.
Any further discussion? Charlie, would you like to?
Yeah, again, it's hard to know exactly what we're talking about without knowing exactly which programs are being referenced. Again, we can make this whole email thread with Emily public so people can read it. I think maybe what the last speaker was referring to was the Tier 1A and 1B designations that were changed. To that end, Montgomery would automatically be eligible, but we would still need to opt into it. And also to meet the Tier 1B designation, we would need to have subdivision regulations, which we currently don't have. That's something the Planning Commission will need to adopt and approve. So again, all of this goes back to local control over this. So if it's going to be helpful, we can certainly, you know, make a PDF copy of this whole email thread available and publish it to the Resources page, try to get that out there tomorrow at all folks.
Is there further discussion? Before I call on you, is there anyone else who has not yet spoken that would like to speak for the first time?
I just actually have a question.
My question is whether we actually know how many failing septics we have in this town, since that seems to be a big contention.
Are you going to directly address the question?
I participated in this survey we did in 2000.
All right, I recognize Tosca to respond.
In the year 2000, Linda Klimba took all the information, we did a mailing, and there was 15 failing systems on Main Street, two of which she knows would be here. And that doesn't include this one.
Okay, so we have maybe still 15, if a couple more failed, we don't know. But for those 15 failing septics, and I'm bringing this up because somebody I know very closely and is in the septic business said recently to me that he's very familiar what is proposed in this town. And he thinks that we could do that for a fraction of the cost and help those people with failing septics, maybe including a town hall, without having to do this huge thing, which he thinks will be way more expensive than what is proposed. And I trust his judgment because he's been in the septic business his entire life with his family. So we would have a lot more cost coming towards us, which actually brings me to my next question. Charlie mentioned, I think it was in this last meeting, that if it's more than 30%, we scrap the whole thing. And, but those 30%, or let's say it's 20% more, in which case it will be another maybe $3 million, $4 million, who would foot that bill, foot that added-on expense?
Charlie, would you like to respond?
If I may, so just to be clear, I think the 30% question comes out of a comment about how, I think it was Greensboro's system? There was another system that was designed in the last few years in Vermont, but when the matter of it came back, I think 30% over budget. So we have seen that happen. What I will say, you know, with all due respect to folks that have expertise in this field that have been looking at this from afar, we have an engineering firm that we're working with that is designing this, that is doing it, coming up with the estimates. So while I appreciate folks that have experience in this, that can lend me total, you know, information that can be helpful, I would just say that we're not winning. We've got an engineering firm we're working with, and they're the ones that are coming up with the design plans, and they're the ones that are coming up with these cost estimates. Granted, there's still estimates, but we're not pulling these numbers out of thin air. That being said, this could come back way over budget, and we set the timing, timing and if we can't meet the affordability measures that we're setting up for ourselves, that's when we pause, we stop, we figure it out. And that could be, it's positive. We don't know what that looks like until we know what it looks like, and then we can respond to it. Until then, we're just responding to hypotheticals.
But I wanted to respond to that real quick. The hypotheticals is what we're basing those votes on that happened on town meeting day, and those hypotheticals are really important because there's a difference whether it'll cost $16 million and the town foots $1 million, or the town will foot $4 or $5 million, which in that case, the taxes will go up, because where else would so much money come from? And yes, you have an engineering firm, and my friend is actually very familiar with them. And I said, so do you-- And I said, so do you think the cost will go up? And he goes, that was his sign, way up, because he's very familiar with that firm. And he believes that we could have a small system that could service those failing septics and on a plot where they could have a collective septic, and it wouldn't break the bank of the town, and we wouldn't be beholden to state money in one form or another. So I think there are much better options, but we just don't give ourselves the time to actually explore those and also invest time into seeing, well, could there be cheaper options that the town can then, with the million dollars that we have or raise, or with the options tax that we raise money, could we foot the bill ourselves? And could it be much smaller and much less impactful on this town? That's all I wanted to say.
So if there is another option that works better, that is more affordable, that meets our needs, by all means, we can pursue that. But we're not rushing this. We've been doing this since 2019. We've looked at any number of different types of systems. I mean, we've seen change in this. It went from the grinder pump system to the gravity fed system. It went from certain areas to other areas. Size changed. So we are trying to address all this stuff. And I am 100% willing to say, like, if numbers come back and they don't work, we're not going to pursue numbers that don't work. But again, I think there's something to be said that, like, if we're trying to vote on something today based on hypotheticals, sure, if that's what we're being put in order to do based on the petition to vote on this now, okay, we're going to vote on it now, because we have to. But if we're not voting with full information, it's just got to be clear that we don't have all the information at the town. And we're going to try to get it. And when we have it, we can then react to that. But I still don't understand the gist of it.
I do have a follow-up question to that. We are dealing with hypotheticals, but we only have $16 million now, right? That we have at our disposal for that system. Is that correct?
Charlie, do you want to clarify the budget?
$16 million figure is currently the total cost estimate for the project to become real. So engineering, construction, permitting, sweep to nuts, $16 million is the cost of the project. As far as the funding on hand, I can pull up the individual spreadsheet. You can give me a second. But, you know, funding on hand through that Apple stack, if you add the numbers together that are in the FAQ, that's where you get the numbers that we have as far as the money on hand. So the delta between that would be what we end up as far as the note that we carry forward.
And that, at this point, as I understand it, is about $1 million that the town has to carry themselves, right? Is that correct?
So right now, there's a range. Again, so I think that we talked about before, if we go off the bid, we're going to be looking to do a core base bid and then bid alternatives to understand what the core costs, what certain parts of it would be adjacent. So that we have a better understanding of what can we afford to build on what scale, just as the questioner was asking. Sorry, I lost my own thought. Did that answer?
That sufficiently answered the question?
No, honestly, it didn't.
Were you trying to ask if there was a million-dollar delta? That's the question I heard you just ask. Is that accurate?
Yeah, I think I need to be more specific. What I would like to know is, do we right now, are we approved, I guess, for 15 millions in grant? And then $1 million that we would foot our own bill, given what we roughly know now as an estimate? So are we approved for 15 million grant money and then $1 million town money?
Charlie?
So again, without pulling up the numbers or doing some math, I will say, sure, 15 million, give or take, in the capital stack or outside of money, again, we can narrow that down to a more finite figure. I'm using that as a round number. The million-dollar walk-away debt figure, that's not fixed at all, because we don't know what it's going to be until we know what it's going to be. We've kind of talked about in the past, a million-dollar note being something in the neighborhood of what, based on the estimates we've got, could be affordable. We haven't been able to look at as far as predictive user rates, local option factor seats, and how they all factor together. So we have talked about, like, walking away with a million-dollar note as being a ballpark figure that we can use in that affordability criteria. But we don't know what that is until we have all the numbers plugged in. As far as what we've been approved for, I mean, if you go all the way back to the beginning, the voters did authorize borrowing authority up to, I don't have that figure handy, but that initial bond vote. So as far as, like, what's been authorized, there is a figure out there. I think from the get-go, we've said, we're not going to go borrow $100 million bucks. So there has been authorization up to a certain amount. But again, there's no fixed figure right now as far as, like, this is what we're going to walk away with, because we don't have the final cost numbers to plug in. Again, we're all working on estimates.
I do want to recognize other people to speak. Do you have any other specific clarifying question on this topic before I recognize someone else?
I do have one more clarifying question.
One more question, and then I need to give other people a chance to speak.
So I would love to get that number that we did approve as a town, if that's possible? And what would be the maximum where we would say no? That would be my other question. And then I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlie, do you want to respond to either of those questions? You don't have to, but I'm giving you the option if you'd like.
So to the question about... $1 million? Was it 12?
That's what's in the bond vote.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Yeah, so 12 million is the borrowing authority that was approved by the voters back in July, like, 2020. I'm sorry, there's a second part.
The second question is, is there a number at which we would say no? Is that correct?
A number that we would say no. So again, what the board has always used as a guiding principle is the user rate affordability. And so as cost escalations have changed, we've been able to bring more money into the funding stack for the project to offset escalations in cost. Now, there's obviously going to be a limit to how much we can do that. But as far as kind of a number where we say no, as far as cost goes, the board has not kind of used a number as far as, and cost, what the board would be using is, where does this end up according to user rates? Again, because if the whole system is being supported by local option factor seats and the user fees, we want to make sure that the user fees are affordable. That's kind of the basis in the world we're in. So thank you.
Charlie? And then you can speak next.
I made a little list. I've been trying to listen to everything that's been going on ever since this started. So I've been doing a lot of reading, a lot of policy analysis. And so I'm going to have a couple tiered mentions on here, and hopefully we can kind of clear the room on this. So in the beginning, you mentioned that there's, one of the votes is a percentage of the homes, there's a cutoff. So there's a percentage or a number of the homes would have to not sign up for the wastewater project. There's a cutoff number for that. If you meet that threshold, does that mean that the wastewater project doesn't go through? The next question would be, will, it just gets kind of long.
Sorry, if we're going to do, I just, my brain can't hold, like, that many questions.
That's why I wrote it down.
If we just toss in this moderator to, like, pause and go back and forth individually per question, it'd be helpful. Are you going to be asking a series of questions, and does that work for you?
Yeah, 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 shoot, shoot.
Charlie, you can respond.
Thank you. I just don't want to forget questions as they come. So, no, we don't have a fixed number per se of if we've got 100 connections and 10 opt out, that's what does it, or 15. Again, it goes more back to that question of if you start pulling users out, where does that put the user fees given the overall stack? And then how does that affect the affordability metric? So no, there is no set kind of number where it's like, once you hit the 10 and then opt out or true, it's more of a, where does it put those user fees?
So on top of that, I would ask, what are the user fees current? And say, for every 10 homes that opt out, what does that put the user fee at? And what is the cutoff for the person? So I'm assuming it's, I'm going to throw an arbitrary number, $500 a month out there. 10 people, 10 homes say, I don't want it. That'll jump it up to, say, $600 a month. At what point, where's the cutoff? Where's that metrics that you keep talking about?
Charlie?
Yeah, so the cutoff has been, again, we haven't, like, we haven't kind of drawn a line in the sand at an actual, like, this is the defined number. What we have talked about is using a percentage of MHI. And around 1% of MHI would calculate to about $500 a year in user fees.
Can I clarify, MHI is median home income?
I'm sorry, mean household.
Mean household, thank you.
So that's what we've been kind of using. I don't know, I can't tell you, like, once you start pulling out individual numbers, how it affects the current estimates. I just can't do that math. Sorry.
Sure, yeah. So that's just kind of something that maybe people should be a little bit more aware of. And to move on to that, the next one is a reoccurring argument. And I mentioned this before in, I think, two select boards. This wastewater is literally tearing this town apart. You've got people on both sides of the fence, and I'm trying to sit in the middle and listen to everything, and it is brutal. The developers up here, Walt and Abe, have to realize what impact this is doing to the town. And on that, the voters need to realize, and I hear this a lot, everybody keeps bringing it up, well, we need the wastewater, because Walt and Abe are putting up affordable housing over there. And then we had the previous town hall where they said, well, if this doesn't go through, then we'll have to put one in ourselves. The people need to know that your vote does not depend on whether or not a housing complex goes in. The vote is for the town. It's not about a housing complex. People need to move beyond that. You need to see beyond that. So whichever way you want the town to move, then make it so. But don't use your vote solely for that one purpose. You're totally skewing everything you know about your town and where you want it to be if that's what you're going to choose to do. If they want to put one in, let them put one in. I would ultimately say, if you're going to put one in, then start building now. Just start building now. If we get the wastewater, we get the wastewater. If not, then do your own wastewater. But don't let people decide whether or not you can put it in solely based on wastewater. You're ruining the entire construct of what this is about. And that's just, everybody needs to really, really pay attention to that. Because that's the issue that's tearing this town apart. The next part is, I mentioned to Tosca earlier about a wastewater commission. Are we going to put up a wastewater commission in the future to watch this? And on that commission, is the town going to have to hire an engineer to take care of this, like we do with the roads? So if we do, is the cost of the engineer going to be included in the yearly? Or will it be an additional?
Do you want Charlie to answer?
I know Charlie wants to answer. Charlie?
So if I may, just real quickly, to the user fees, I agree. I think folks should know, like, what is this looking like? And there is a section on the FAQs on the website that gets into user fee calculations, how they're going to be established, what the estimated annual user fees are for the system, cost of connection also. So we're trying to get information out there, and I will refer folks to the FAQ document. And then also, if folks do read the FAQs and you have additional questions, please let us know. To the commission question, so yes, there will be a wastewater commission, similar to, there is a water commission right now. Some of them are better than me, but the water commission, for as long as I've known it, has been the select board. There hasn't been a second commission. I don't want them to do it. We will form a wastewater commission. Whether that is the select board or a separate body has to be determined. But there will be a commission that kind of sets the budget, handles the operations and maintenance stuff. As far as operations and maintenance goes, we will need to hire a firm to manage the system, very similar to how we look at managing the water system. Looking at the water system, we had SOS managing it for a number of years. We kind of pivoted and brought those services in-house a couple of years ago, three years ago. There were some concerns with some of the maintenance happening. We are now looking to go back out and contract out the maintenance of the water system again, outside the community. We're looking to do the same thing with the wastewater system. We would find a firm that does this. Ideally, we find a firm that can handle the water system and the wastewater system. So it would be managed by a professional firm that does this. As far as the cost of that goes, the cost of operations and maintenance that kind of plugs into this overall estimate framework, that does account for the cost of that firm being there to do that, to maintain.
Through the user's fees?
Again, the whole funding stack is provided for by the user fees, the local option tax. The operation and maintenance costs line up, and if it's plugged into that, includes the cost of having, you know, a firm. And again, it's definitely, right? We don't have a signed contract with anybody yet, but looking at regional averages or what this costs, we can gather an estimate of kind of what the cost of that associated and kind of would be.
So that would be the 1% of the MHI that we're trying to stick within. Or is there a threshold above that, the 2% of MHI? Or are we still staying within the 1%? Because if we use that arbitrary number of $500 on there, it seems kind of hard that we're going to raise $35,000, I think it was, $35,000 a year to pay for the loan and pay for an engineer or a firm to come in and take a look at it. On top of that, if something happens, pipe breaks, anything else happens, who's going to pay for that? Does that come out of a warranty on there? Or is that coming out of another loan that the town has to pull out just to take care of this?
Charlie?
So there's two different things there. Overall, we would still be trying to look at that 1% of MHI. I will say that state federal programs that do this stuff typically use a metric of 2% of MHI as being kind of where they put a ceiling. The board has continually said, we get that, but we want to look at a lower ceiling. So we kind of use that 1% as that target. But again, we have to put a line in the sand to say, dollars and cents, this is the cap on user fees. Again, it's this target. As far as future costs go, there will be a warranty period for certain elements of the system that get put in. So if something does fail within a month, it would be covered by warranty. They don't have the details on that. And then as far as the future costs of work, as part of this, we are developing what's called a financial sustainability plan, I think. It is addressed in the FAQ document, I believe. I can try to find it for some more information, what's on it. But as part of this, in order for rural development and state to kind of give the green light and say, you guys are good to go, here's your money, we do have to develop a financial sustainability plan that says, hey, we are actually putting money away for a rainy day so that when X breaks or lines to be replaced, we can demonstrate that we have that capacity. We are looking to do that through this same funding stack, through this same funding source. So again, we don't have that plan fully written yet. I was emailing the Department of Environmental Conservation today about some details on their wire. So it's still a work in progress, but that is included in the overall plan.
Yeah, just three last things. I'm going to make them real quick, because they're fairly simple. The first one would be, is there a way that the town can regulate the look of this affordable housing? So that it doesn't look like something big? So that it doesn't look like something big and modern, and it totally distracts and takes away from the feel of the town, the look of the town? Um, is there a way that the town can regulate that? Um, and then again, we'd have to have someone to regulate it.
Did you want that addressed, or do you wanna leave that in a different question?
This, uh, this is just three simple, three simple things. Um, then, um, the 30%, you mentioned 30% in the last, last town hall meeting. So I'm gonna go back over this real quick, just for clarification. The, uh, town gets, uh, a 12, 12 million dollar loan, I think it was? Is it what you just said? 12 million dollar? But whatever.
I believe that was the bond that was approved?
Is it a bond? And then it's like 16 million dollar loan, maybe at the top? Whatever the end number is? There's a, there's a million dollar loan in there somewhere. Right?
Sorry, ask the question one more time, there's too many different numbers.
There's a, there's a grant, I think the entire total is 16 million dollars.
That's the estimate right now.
That's the estimate. The town is gonna take on $1 million worth of a loan.
So to clarify, what we've heard is that there's $15 million of a funding stack that have been identified?
Right.
That $1 million is the, is the estimated balance, but that balance won't be known until the bids return.
Sure.
Yep.
And it was also mentioned that there's an affordable, affordability metrics. Can you elaborate on what metrics you're using? If you wanna stay within 30%, will that include any other monies coming in? Or does that exclude it? So therefore, if we stay within the 30%, say $5 million, and you get a $2 million grant from somewhere, you're still within that 30%? Or are you gonna stay strictly with 30% grants or no grant? Last one, simple one. Simple one, okay? The reassurance on that, on, on, on the housing, okay? How does the developer reassure everyone that this is for senior housing? Can the developer pick and choose who moves into this? Who's gonna pick and choose? How are they going to vet these people? That's what, that's the very last question. These are all the things that have been floating around online and through talks over beers. So hope I didn't, uh, fog your brain too much.
You're within your time. Thank you. Charlie, do you wanna respond to those last questions?
Appreciate the question. Um, so to the first question about regulating, like, what development looks like, for lack of a word, um, we, we will, I will make PDF copies of these email chains, we'll put them on the website so folks can read them, because a lot of these questions get addressed in there. But in short, um, the development of what, or the regulation of what development looks like, um, in short, we don't, through things like site plan review, um, that looks at, um, yeah, essentially what things look like. The other, uh, element-
And Charlie, I'm sorry, can you con- confirm who conducts site plan review?
Yeah, so the planning commission would be, um, charged with, or I think they already are, considering changing, um, things into a permitted site plan review as part of the bylaw organization they're doing right now. So I, I, the planning commission, speaking of, uh, I'm in. But site plan review would be one process. Another element, um, is, uh, around historic, uh, historic nature of certain buildings and what the town can kind of, you know, put guardrails on there. So for example, like the Red House, Charlie Corrie's house, right? If we deem that the historic nature of certain things, somebody could tear that down and put some shoe locks. Um, and this is like complicated stuff, but there's kind of broad strokes. Uh, but again, we'll put these emails up so folks can see them. Um, I, I still am a little confused about the 30% figure, because the, the place that we've used 30% figure was strictly around just kind of according to a project that happened to come in way over budget as an example of what would happen, as a hypothetical. Um, so I am not exactly sure, um, how the 30% factors into the numbers. I am not clear on that question.
Um, if I could just try to interpret? So the question I heard you ask for the second question was the metric around affordability? And I believe you addressed that in terms of the, um, mean household income is the metric for affordability that you were holding, that that, uh, is that correct? And does that answer the question? I just wanna make sure you had a chance to clarify and respond accordingly, since it seems like there's still confusion.
Right, no, so la- the last town hall meeting, um, I picked up that you said you wanted to stay within 30% of an increase.
Of a budget overrun from the current 15 million.
Budget over, oh, yeah, over the budget. Was that correct?
Yeah, so can I, I think either, either I misspoke, or maybe, um, like, we didn't quite connect on what we were talking about? Because there, there, again, there's no 30% wiggle room on, on, on a budget figure that I can think of that we talked about. Um, so perhaps, uh, there was some confusion there. Um, but at the end of the day, uh, you can think about it, just a stack of numbers that all lead to the user fees. And so whatever happens up above, as things move around, whether it's this grant, that grant, this cost, that cost, user this, user that, it's that bottom number. And so as far as variance from things, it all comes down to that user fee, is a lot of that.
Does that answer the question?
No, it does, it does. Uh, earlier, um, it was mentioned that the user fees, um, should be at least, it, this is from my interpretation, i- the user fee should be at least posted, so everybody knows what the maximum user fee will be. Anything less is a bonus. So people should be aware of what they're getting into before they get into it. Um, if user fees go up to, say, I don't know, $700 a month, or $700 a year, or whatever it is, people should know this before they make this vote and not afterwards. If it bumps up to $1,000 a year, you've got people that aren't gonna be able to make that, and they're gonna be forced out, so.
And to clarify, it is the 1% of MHI that is determining, uh, the cap on the user fee? Is that accurate? Or do you wanna clarify further?
So again, I, I'll say that there is information on the, on the FAQs as to the numbers, as we best understand them now based on the estimates. Um, we're not gonna have the bids backed by due quo first, so we're not gonna have the numbers to plug in to kind of say definitively like, this is where we're seeing the user fees now. Um, so unfortunately, to the point about, you know, conform voting on this when the time comes, we're just not gonna have that, that number in hand. Um, once the bids come back and play everything in the funding stack again and see what it shoots out for the user fees, then we can certainly have a much better idea. Um, the, you know, a lot of this will also be governed by the ordinance that will be drafted and developed to, to govern the system. And so that will have all of the user rate calculations in it. Um, so as far as like caps or max, or what happens if X or Y, I, I think we will be addressing a lot of that through the ordinance. Um, and again, I will say that, I just wanna be very clear, like, said it again, we've used 1% of MHI as a target. We have not drawn a line in the sand that mean number specifically. Um, so that's, I'm just saying that, cause like, if it comes back at like 1.01% MHI, that doesn't mean it doesn't count, like, that doesn't, yeah, so hopefully folks understand that. We have not drawn a line in the sand, we've had targets we've worked towards as we advance things, for no other reason than if we saw something with develops that said, you're never gonna meet this metric, not even close to that metric, that would be the flag for us to say, okay, pause, stop, this isn't working, well, can we fix it? Or we can back up and go home. Um, so again, we've used that as kind of a check as we've advanced things going forward.
Charlie, I wanna give you the opportunity to address the last question around tenancy, and then I wanna make sure other people have a chance to address the audience as well. The question was around, how do you, uh, control who is in tenancy of the building? And whether, um, it can be designated for specific use and how that's controlled? Is that accurate?
Yep.
Yeah, so I'm not an expert when it comes to that and those processes. Uh, my understanding is that, um, depending on whether or not you accept public monies through certain programs, which are strictly between the developer and the public entity, whether it's the state or whatever else is doing this, those programs would then put guardrails around how many affordable housing units, how many senior units, how many market grade housing units can go into something. Um, I don't believe the town has the ability to say specifically, that property has to have X senior housing or X affordable housing. It is up to the individual property owner and developer, um, where the guardrails kick in on thou shalt have X, I believe is more attached to, um, what the funding they might be taking from public sources it is. But again, I will say, when it comes to that and to this, I'm not an expert, so I'm just saying based on my limited understanding on how that system works.
You'd like to address the crowd?
Yeah, hello, my name is, uh, Chris Patello, and, uh, I'm one of the, uh, the original ones that started this back, uh, almost a year ago now, when the, uh, select board had a meeting right here that said the village was out. And, uh, then we then asked for a revote, but they wouldn't give it to us. So this is our way of trying to get a revote. But I have, uh, some questions for, uh, for the select board chair. So first of all, I, I just wanna make an observation. This funding stack stuff sounds like a car salesman trying to tell you, don't worry about the price of the car, just worry about the monthly payment. But I'm worried about the price of the car. So we're at, what, 16 million now estimated cost? You wanna answer them as I, or you want me to give them off to you?
I'll, I'll try to clarify as much as I can, just to move this along.
And it's more just sort of, I, I just don't wanna, I wanna make sure I don't miss anything. Um, so we can certainly do it however it works, I just wanna make sure that the questions that are asked are addressed, and my short-term memory tired.
Fair. Um, maybe I'll take a shot at the questions that I think I understand to facilitate. 16 million is the current estimate that is, we receive from the engineer.
The current overall cost estimate is round numbers 16 million.
Okay, the next question. Is there an instance where the taxpayers are gonna be on, e- ever would be on the hook for any of this money? Not just the users of the system, the actual taxpayers in the town, the rest of the taxpayers?
I'll defer to you.
So, um, you know, by nature of a municipality borrowing money for something, that loan is backed by full faith and credit of that municipality or that public entity. So to, to that end, the, the town is on hook. Now, as far as like how that plays out, what that looks like, uh, we can talk about hypotheticals, but it would be a case of what happens and what costs and how to respond, and what happens we have? So, I mean, yeah, hypothetically, there's a scenario where the town could end up saying like, hey, we have to pull money from property taxes to make this work. Um, but the framework the board has advanced, because the town voted down the property tax assessment, we've moved forward to deny them, to not plan for that, to not have that be part of the, the funding.
Okay, so the original bond approved was 12 million, or somewhere's in there, in 2020. And we're at 16 million now. So why hasn't this come back before the voters to raise the, the bond? The amount of the bond?
Charlie?
So at that time, we set flat out, we're never gonna borrow 12 million bucks. The authorization to borrow was needed in order to move forward and get the grant offer from USDA Rural Development, which was kind of the foundational funding that we did move forward on. Um, so that was kind of the, the framework. As far as not coming back to your own bond, just because we're not asking to borrow more than 12 million dollars, we're asking to borrow, and this is where we get into that, again, you know, until we know that we're talking about that, a million bucks or less. So the board has authorized the town to borrow up to 12 million, if we're using the right numbers, if we borrow less than that to some degree, the town has that authorization from the local authority.
Now, some of your grant funding is tied to, uh, a certain percentage of, uh, median household income. The USDA grant, I believe, right? And is that 1.5% of median household income?
So the grant is not tied to mean household income directly. I don't know if USDA Rural Development used median household income in their initial calculations of what they would offer the community. Um, they may have, I'm not sure. Uh, the mean household income numbers we talked about here tonight, that 1%, 2%, um, as I said, state federal programs, when they look at like affordability and where they draw the ceiling, they usually look at 2%. But none of the grant sources have a trigger in it that say, okay, the user fees has hit X percent of median household income, that's a green light, red light, money's here, money's gone.
And I'm also hearing, just for clarification, that you're saying the 1% MHI target is a target, not a cap, and not binding? Is that accurate? Just for clarification?
Yeah, again, you know, as we've moved forward, we've kept these, these targets, these things we've worked towards, these, these numbers that we've kind of been using, but nothing is defined in sand, on paper. There's no, like, like I said, none of these grants are written in a way that says like, you hit 1.7, the money's gone. Like, that's not how that was.
Well, I believe it was, in the USDA grant language, it said something about affordability. At a certain affordability metric, the money was gone, but maybe that's my misunderstanding. So maybe you could post the paper that you sent me, which is the total grant, and write in that the language of a certain percentage of median household income. And then it sounded like they was gonna cut the grant out if it was charged, making people have to, cause you're using forced connections. That was the reason why there was a percentage of median household income, because you're using forced connections. So you're forcing people on the sewer. And the reasons, and that was, that was my take of the reason why the USDA grant had that in it. If you don't use forced connections, then I think that goes away.
Okay. Do you want to respond?
I, I can certainly go back and, and reread that and double check it. Um, and, uh, and yeah, if we want to put the, um, I can't think what they call it, the, um, letter of obligation, or letter of condition, or whatever basically, out, which says, here are the conditions of the grant, we can certainly make that public. And if I am forgetting something, I apologize. Um, there's hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of pages of, of grant documents, and again, I apologize, I'm forgetting a provision within USDA RDs where they do have a cap. I don't recall anything specific to forced connections versus optional connections, but again, if I'm misremembering, I apologize. But we can certainly make the, the letter of conditions available, um, for, answer questions about it. And I apologize for not having a better memory of that thing.
You do not need to apologize for your memory.
Okay, so now, uh, I got into this, this whole thing because they were going to force me on the sewer, and I didn't wanna be on it. And now, I think it's changed, I believe it's not going up my way now, all the way. So I'm, now I'm just a taxpayer, I guess. I guess that's how it's gonna be. So do you plan on putting it up, the rest of the way up Hazen's notch?
Charlie?
Yeah, so, um, the service area in the center initially was pegged the footprint of the water system. So we started from that, that point. And then we advanced through 30%, 60%, and 90% engineering deliverable. And when we got that 90% engineering deliverable, the planned specs for which are on that FAQ page, the initial cost estimates they came back from that were essentially so high that we said, hey, that's, that's not gonna work. So how can we scale back to create the, essentially, size of the system that we can afford to build, similar to what was brought up earlier? Um, when we're going out to bid now, what we're trying to do, as I said earlier, is create the core, um, the core area, uh, a base bid for that, look at bid alternates for certain sections of the system. So for example, farther down 118, or around the corner, back towards the red field, or even farther up 58. Um, at this point, I will say that to go all the way up to the very far end on 58, that, that would be the very last place that would get added back in. Um, and the numbers would have to come in like incredibly low. So again, I, I can't say what's gonna happen in the future, but at this point, I would say there's a very slim chance that what gets built matches the initial surface area that was, that was mapped. And, and folks have seen that, the surface area maps that have changed. Uh, again, the most current normal working ways, the one is on the FAQ page.
Okay, well, that's about all I had. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Charlie. Thanks. Uh, before you speak again, is there anything, Teresa, would you like to speak? And then Jimbo, you can speak after Teresa.
Hi, I'm Teresa. Tosca? I'm not, I was against this whole septic, well, I'm sorry, I, she's my sister from another mother.
It's okay to look at the room, we're just trying to avoid direct 101 debate.
I was against all this because we were forced on it. I just bought my house, I didn't wanna be forced into anything. So then we got dropped, and then my vision, was it? I was, I know people need the wastewater. I really do. Trust me, I know this. I know everybody's concerns. I wish I started my fight because I've been fighting Charlie for a year now and I keep telling him, not done fighting yet. I'm almost there, Charlie, okay? But he's been a good chess chess player, you know? And it's given me something to do and it's made me learn more about this town, which I should have started over a year, more than that. Because there are actually a lot of good people here, but there's not a lot of information out there. We sent out a flyer and more people came up to me and said they were grateful for that flyer because they got to know the information. And it was it was true because everybody we researched it all and put it down there. So then everybody can make their own opinion because that's what this world's all about, making your own opinion. I just wish the select board would do more of that. It didn't cost us that much. We raised money for the flyers. So I just wish that they could get the information out because there are nobody's hardly on the Zoom, as I said before, or come to the select board meetings. We chose to go to every mailbox to get information out there. And I think that's the best way for people to learn. Like, these people are from the village. They had no clue half of this stuff until they started coming. But life makes it hard for people not to do this stuff. So Tosca, that's what my thought was. And I, some people really need it. But then there's my old old ways that I was raised with. You buy something, you take care of your own. You don't make somebody else pay for it. And that that is one more other question. We're getting all this money. Nobody gets money for free. I'm sorry. Because it's there's always backlash. There's always something that's going to come up and bite you right in the butt. What happens to that money? I mean, grants, but government's not giving out free money. It's going to come back to us sooner or later. And that's what I want. That's my my concern right now. Where's this money going to come from? All the taxpayers? Somebody's not social security that can barely make ends meet as it is? That's my issue now. I I'm done with the wastewater. I really am. It is going to be what it is. You can't, there's another old saying, you can bring people the water, but you can't make them drink it. So that's where I've come to. So I want to thank everybody. And Charlie, you've been a good chess player. Okay? And you could have said hi to me the other day. You just walked right by me, but I said hi. Okay?
Jimbo, you have 10 minutes.
Hey. Uh, Jimbo, shall I? I like I get with the grants, like I think it it would be for the select board would be really difficult to be like, oh, we got this grant. And yay, oh, we got this one. And like, I think that the idea of like them going out and getting all the grants and then reporting back makes more sense. And I can understand the if we were to all be a part of every step, it would seem like it might even be more difficult. The, some of the questions like have been like, I'm trying to like sort of find things to take comfort in. And people are like, oh, the town plan, you know, the town plan will govern that. The town plan for, it said there was no centralized sewer planned or in the works and local businesses were on their own. So I'm just, it does seem like apparent, like sometimes the town plan gets, um, overwritten or like, like they're sort of a more a bigger important thing. And, um, so I'm wondering how like, um, how how much faith I can put in the town plan. I realize it's just a plan, but like, is it how how much power it has? You want to do this one?
Would you like Charlie to respond?
Yeah, it'd be great.
Um, so members of the planning commission board here can respond, but I believe for the most recent, I don't.
And actually, Charlie, I'm sorry. Do you want me to defer to a member of the planning commission to speak to the town plan?
Sure, I believe, unless it.
Are you are you willing to speak to that?
I believe the town current, the current update of the town plan does have reference to a municipal wastewater system in it. I don't remember exactly.
The the current town plan says that it was that the town is working on developing one. And I don't remember if the town plan before.
It said it did not.
The current town plan does mention
Okay.
wastewater project in progress.
Because this was started under the town plan that said it didn't. That's that's what I was talking about. I haven't, yeah, I do know this town plans as it does. The, uh, it's a bummer. It's like tie tied in with other stuff because I do feel like we can't predict the future and like all of a sudden, whether or not we should have a wastewater system is getting tied in with like affordable housing and like the governor's thing and like and like I I wanted like, um, there was a question earlier about maybe the grants for, um, people for the government helping you or whatever, the grants for redoing your septic. But then that wouldn't make sense for the cityscaping. Um, because if for the cityscaping, you'd sort of want the whole lines. So I think that some of the, um, some of the, um, attempts to do multiple things at once have made it more challenging. The the bond vote, like the bond number, and I do remember exactly like people, I remember Charlie, you were like, yeah, we'd never use that. And so when I was trying to run numbers in my head, one of the things I ran into was I was like, well, I was told we needed that number to get a grant. But then I was like, oh, but that's the number. But it wasn't the number, but it legally it is the number. And so I sometimes things I don't I don't know. It was just, it's weird when things aren't what they appear. And I don't know, like, I don't think we should have like a this is the grant, but we tell the people who we're getting to get the grants from and like, this is what we're really going to do plan. But, um, if there was some way to like make those the same, um, I think it would be helpful. Yeah, 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 yeah. It's there's, um, it's it's really complicated, this thing. And it's just a bummer. It's we're tying in really other, I mean, affordable housing is really complicated. And putting them all together, it's just makes it really, really complicated. So I appreciate the time to get things set up and to come and let people talk. So, thank you.
Is there anyone who hasn't spoken yet that would like to? Yeah, Pat, please come on up. And I'll say, I should have said this at the beginning, if there's anyone that isn't able to come to the mic, we can bring a mic to you. Now that you're here, I apologize for not making that reference earlier.
Okay, this side? Swallow it, I guess. Okay. I'm Pat Farmer. Um, and I'm not going to talk about money. Uh, nothing is cast in iron yet. Um, Charlie said that decisions will be made when we find some, get some final costs and the guidelines are there. I'm not really concerned about that. What really concerns me is just one question. Are we a community or are we not? We take care of our own. We take care of Montgomery. The people that live in the center in the village. They pay our taxes, their taxes for the back roads. That's the biggest chunk of money that the town spends on the town. Excluding the, well, I'm not going to talk about the school district. That's something else altogether. And the people in the city, in the center and the village really don't get any value out of the huge amount that's spent on the back roads. I happen to be one of those that does. I live on a back road. Many years ago, when the water system was put in for the village and the center, the people that live outside the village and the center were asked to contribute to the bond payment. Well, we're a community. And we pay some of that bond issue every year. So, yeah, if the users are going to pay for this and if need be, the taxpayers that aren't on the system, yeah, we're going to chip in because we're a community. And that's the way it works. I don't like to see all this fighting. People are worried about this, that and the other thing. Yeah, some people are going to have a tough time. Yeah, I'm on social security. I have a tough time. But we make it. And there are going to be some good guidelines on affordability, given the medium household income. So maybe the project won't go. I think Montgomery needs it. I hope we get it. It's going to be better for the town. And we're not going to see Morrisville. There's we're not in the right location for that. But anyways, my question again is, are we a community or are we not? Thank you.
Is there anyone that hasn't spoken tonight that would like to speak for the first time? And then Tosca will be recognized first after everyone else has had a chance to speak. Oh, yeah, actually, before, no one on Zoom?
No, so far, I'm saying so far, there's no queue.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
And my name's Alyssa Hardy. And in regards to Jimbo's question, it's on page 64 of the town plan for the current town plan. But I wanted to say, like, I'm not speaking on behalf of the planning commission in any way, but I wanted to let you guys know my understanding. Like, I don't want to confuse the wastewater system with the housing concerns, but my understanding for regional planning that I wanted to clarify that I feel like there's a push saying regional planning was pushing us to do the constraints analysis, looking at develop, changing the zoning between the village and the center. And that was initiated by the planning commission. It wasn't regional planning coming to us. They said if we looked at changing to allow higher density, we would be more likely to get a grant that would help work on the bylaws. So we, the planning commission came up with that area to look at. We did the constraints analysis. And it was, I think, two areas that were suitable to consider. I can't speak for the whole board, but my feeling was we all looked at it and said, no, that doesn't make sense. So I think it's very unlikely that the zoning bylaws would change for that area and that it's not a real concern for that to get developed. And it's not regional pressuring us to do that. And I know our next meeting is this coming Tuesday at 6 o'clock at the Public Safety Building. And Emily from Regional Planning will be there. And one of the items on the agenda is looking at how Act 181 will affect Montgomery, that she has a presentation to and inform the planning commission a little bit more about how that act is affecting the town. So that's kind of what I wanted to say, my opinion of regional planning's role with Montgomery. And that we did look at that area, but it's not something that seemed to make sense to develop. But also, I don't think that's a true concern for those fears mixed with developing that area. And I think that's that's everything.
Just to clarify, that is planning commission meeting at the Public Service Building Tuesday at 6:00 PM. And a representative from Northwest Planning will be there to address some development concerns?
Yeah.
Great. Y'all take note. Is there someone else? Yeah, would you like to speak?
Hi, my name's Roberta Baker. Um, and I and I, like others, are not against the septic system. I do think there's we could do it a lot cheaper without any, uh, parameters on it. Um, I think a lot of people are concerned about affordable housing, senior housing, or whatever that may be. But I also remember having a conversation at the select board meeting that the septic system was going to be for, I don't know, what was it, like 100? 100 households or whatever that is. So if we only use 70 of those, I'm not sure how many of that, that would leave us 30 households or units or whatever. So that with that 30 units, we can expand businesses. If we do the senior or affordable housing, we're only going to be limited to a certain number of units, I would think, based on what the septic system could do. So if we have more units or more housing like that, I would think that we would be paying per unit of, say, if it was a 10 unit place, they would each be paying or the owners would be paying for each of those units, right? So that would, in essence, bring down costs for other people because at this point, if they were going to build affordable housing and do it themselves, they would have already done it with a septic system. So they're waiting for this to pass in order to build that. Otherwise, I think it would have been done by now. I'm trying to think where I was going with that. So I guess I just wanted to clarify that. Does that, is that right, what I'm thinking?
Charlie, do you want to respond?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not 100% sure that I totally follow. Um, there there are, so on the FAQ document website, there are, um, there is information on capacity and the full capacity you're willing for. And the system is being designed to allow for, I remember correctly, it's like a 30% increase above the current uh, need of capacity, if that makes sense.
Okay, so.
Correctly. So so we're pulling a system that will allow for growth. Now, there is now a two of going back to size of system and who's on the system within it. Um, and I just want to make sure that we differentiate between a smaller system, but everybody in that area is hooked into it as opposed to you build the same size system, but you take out 30% of the people in a kind of diffuse way. You're still building the same size of the system, the footprint, if that makes sense. I don't know if that's factually this or not. But as far as capacity goes, we are building for allowable growth. And, you know, one of the ways that we did that was we went through every parcel in the center and said, here's what is there right now. And here, given our current zoning, is what could be built there. Um, again, this analysis was done, God, this point, three years ago, four years ago, but
Five years ago.
Five years ago.
Five years.
Yeah, so at that point, to try to kind of figure out like, okay, if if, you know, full build out, throw it off the wall, like, what would that capacity be? That would, no other analysis that was done to say like, if if everything went full bore all the way it could go, what would we be looking at as part of the? it could go, what would we be looking at as part of the unit capacity? I don't believe we're building to that full extent, we don't have the actual physical capacity for it. Because we are limited by how many gallons per day the wastewater recovery facility, AKA big ass, which field can handle. I don't know if that was your question, no, I'm sorry.
I, I think sort of. So we're going to build a system to meet our current needs, plus an extra thirty percent.
Yes, using, just straight, I don't know.
Right.
Yes, that's, that's.
So in that thirty percent, that would allow growth for current businesses and/or affordable senior housing?
So, so within that balance of capacity, so the planned capacity is forty thousand gallons per day. The current peak flows are twenty-eight thousand gallons a day. So I followed, my math on percentages might not be right. I thought it was about thirty percent growth. But anyway, forty thousand gallons a day, building for the peak capacity we're seeing right now, town is twenty-eight thousand. And so we have this reserve capacity, a lot. And so one of the things that will, we have to clarify, the ordinance, that will be the role of the commission is to allot that capacity. And so there has to be criteria as to what that looks like. And so it could go for affordable housing, it could go for, you know, say, doggy wants to put in seating at first crack for pizza. So we kind of divvy it up. There is an endpoint at which we have no more capacity. So there, there is a scenario whereby the commission could say, hey, you know, someone wants to build a water park or gas in the barns, no, we can't do that, you know? So there will be choices. But to say, you know, there, there is an analysis in here to try to say, like, okay, if you were to say, what does that look like? Here's one scenario. So if you look on the site, there are some estimates around, like, well, you know, a restaurant usually says X gallons per seat, a single-family home is about X gallons per day. So you can kind of do the math and be like, well, you could say X single-family homes and X restaurants. So you kind of play the game and figure it out.
So we're charging per household by an average number of gallons? So a restaurant would pay more than a household?
Yes, that is, that is an important clarification, is the user fee calculations are done to get a, an average round number, right? And so from that, we acknowledge that there's going to be higher use on property A versus B, because A is a, A's a snowshoe and B is a psycho, right? And so through the rate calculations, we would need to decide, you know, similar to the water system, is there a base cost and then a cost on top of it per usage? That's the framework we're kind of looking at using. So it will not be that every property has a uniform equal yearly payment. It will depend on usage and the scale.
Okay, so just to clarify, so if there was affordable housing or whatever put in, that may be charged per unit?
Yeah, so I think that would depend a little bit on, on what was designed, how it was done. You know, if somebody built a twenty-unit building that was affordable housing, that was rentals, the owner would be paying the fees. They would then figure out how to treat that based on the rent. So it, it kind of depends on, are these rentals, are these owners, you know, and how that plays out. It would depend on what kind of housing we're talking about, I guess, as far as how the individual fee calculates out for that end user.
If I could just clarify, if I understand your question correctly, the owner of a twenty-unit building would be paying a higher rate than the owner of a single-unit building? Is that, that was the question? And you'd say, yes, it would scale to some degree?
Scale based on, based on usage and based on, you know, the, in terms of like, physical building, units within the building versus, like, one building with twenty units versus twenty individual units? Like, this user fee framework, we have to calculate out, like, how to treat X versus Y. So like, we haven't gotten that deep in the weeds yet, but yes, they would be treated equitably but appropriately.
Yeah, by scale.
By scale.
Then it's your question?
Yeah, and just, just one follow-up thing. So if, I mean, if there's a hundred users and we get fifty more users, just throwing out numbers, would the cost go down? Because there's more people on the system?
Yes, so as more units, properties, individuals join the system, there is the kind of, how many people are drawing from the pie, how big is the slice? And so, yes, there is a scenario whereby more users adding on, the individual user fees could go down because there's more people paying into it. Now, there's also some type of, at the other end of that, around if you do have more users, more users in the system, there could be a tick up in, like, some of the operations and maintenance costs. But on broad strokes of principle, yes, as people join the system, the more users come under it, we, I, give me one second, just to mute.
Please mute if you're at home on Zoom.
Sorry. Yes, sorry, I'm running late. Yes, as more people join the system, the individual costs can go down because it's spread against more people.
Okay.
Answer your questions?
Yeah.
Great. Is there anyone else that hasn't spoken yet that would like to speak for the first time this evening? Lynn? And as you're approaching the mic, is there anyone in Zoom that wants to speak? We'll invite you to use the raise your hand function, and we will make sure you get in the queue.
Lynn Locker, I just want to say, I know, everyone knows the vote is April 1st. There are a lot of people who might be away on vacation. A lot of people go south. And I know that in the town report book that we got, it specifically tells you how to go online or do an absentee ballot or whatever. I'm just, I just want to reiterate to people that if they don't, if they are not going to be here, that they should either call Liz or look at the town report or go online to the website so that we can have as many people vote. And what the vote turns out is the vote. And I just want to make everybody aware of that, okay?
Is there anyone else that has not spoken yet tonight that would like to speak for the first time before we give people a second chance to speak?
Hello, my name's Christopher Johnson, and I just had a couple of questions.
Come a little bit closer to the mic, just because your voice is a little quieter.
A lot of them have already been answered, and like, as these meetings progress, I'm learning a lot of what I haven't read yet. I guess, has there been any thought when it comes to, like, a commercial kitchen? Think of it, they cook hundreds of burgers. I'm at home, I cook two, you know? So the excessive, what would be added to the system? Is that kind of added into the user fee? And also kind of the same thing with, like, a medium or high-density housing? Would that also, you know, seventeen, twenty, however many kitchens versus, and that kind of has already been?
So I believe that addresses the question that was just asked, the difference between a single unit versus a twenty unit, and the references that Charlie made around the use of a commercial facility versus single facility. Was there another question to that? Do you want to clarify?
One of the, the way that we're measuring this is essentially water in, water out. And so your water meter, this is the kind of, if your water meter shows X water in, you know, we assume X water out. Now, we do have provisions in there around if there's not a house that is put up to the water system. There's probably three different offices that should be able to calculate that. And we would let the owner kind of figure out what works best for them. I don't think we've got anybody in this district, there was someone in the village who, for example, had cattle. So like, water in was to, cows wasn't going back out through the wastewater. So there's some intricacies there, they have to address, but in principle, water in, water out. So you could be a restaurant that takes a ton of water, puts it out, like you said. You could also be someone that just takes incredibly long showers, and that gets picked up for too. So that's the way we measure it.
Okay. That was kind of my point, was I pay the same to water my vegetables and wash my car as a restaurant with a commercial kitchen? The numbers are kind of adding, that we would add the same stress to said system?
Yes, but I will say, there are certain incidental uses of water that we cannot capture. So for example, if you wash your car from the hose that's hooked up to the water system, that water is not going back in. We try to capture kind of the, the more significant regular uses of water that don't go back in. So for example, somebody who's getting water for livestock. But yeah, there will be instances where if you are washing the car or watering the raised bed, that is not a capture of water.
Okay. My other question is, the, like, basically, the whole system, is that like a trunk with, I guess, tees? Where additional can be tied in later? Or do we have to, like, interrupt the trunk later on?
Yeah, so kind of, in real basic terms, a lot of folks, when you think about a wastewater system, you think about the pipes in the street, the pipe goes from the building to the street. It's all a grid that follows kind of the right of way for everything. The system we're designing is different because it is all gravity-fed. And so the pipes don't quite look like the same kind of a grid. It was a little bit more like a grid and a spiral out of A, if that makes sense, as far as the cobwood. And you can look at these plans on the website, by the way, it shows the current layout of pipes. That being said, it is being designed so that future connections can add onto it as they become, as the desire comes. So for example, if the pipe goes down South Main Street to service houses one, two, and three, if House Four comes on, they could pay to connect. Or if, like, infill happened and a lot that was empty, they could connect to it. So it is being built to allow future connections as easy as possible.
Okay, I'm, like, I mean, basically, my understanding of a system is you have a trunk, you have laterals, and you do it to whatever existing's there. Obviously, we can't plan for what may be there or not. But the idea was, if somebody was to opt out now, based on whatever their reason is, could they just knowingly be able to tie in later? You know, that they're not excluded permanently?
Yeah, so just in terms of strictly engineering and putting aside kind of the other conversation around an opt-in, opt-out, and what that does to the economics of it. Yes, a future person could opt in to connect, whether it's an existing structure or a new structure. But one difference I will point out is that when we are doing these day-one connections, as we call them, we are not charging connection fees. Everybody's getting connected, everyone's getting connected. Now, in the future, if someone wants to get connected, there will be connection fees associated with that. So there'll be fees to connect, there's the infrastructure costs. So future connections will potentially cost, cost money, that should be obvious, but yeah.
Right. My other question is, any medium or high-density housing in the school system? Is the school system, like, do we have enough room for that many more families?
I mean, that's the way out of my view.
Like, I understand that, but is this, like, kind of with the planned development of the city? Like, big picture? Do we have, like, do we have that capacity? And what's the additional cost added to the taxpayers? If, for example, we did not have that additional capacity?
Yeah, so I think there's a number of ways we can look at this in terms of impacts to things like the school system, or things like the road system, or things like the fire department. As far as schools go, you know, you can look at both ways. One is, if we get more housing and there's more kids in the school, you know, can the school fit that? On the flip side, if we don't have enough housing and we don't have enough families, the population in the school gets so low that it's just foreclosure, I mean, I guess it could go either way. I will say, one thing that, with, with the system being tied to the center of town, you know, this won't impact things like municipal services and back roads as far as road maintenance goes. So, yeah, I don't, I don't know. It depends on kind of which string the pole, you find out what it's attached to. And we haven't done a full analysis of, like, down and out of all.
Right. I mean, like, speaking on that, I, I wish we had that as information, as well as, like, I understand we can't have every terms and agreement of every aspect. But really, I would think it'd be a short list of who we have to pay back and what the terms are. I understand the bids haven't come in yet, and, I, I mean, I guess that's another. Could we make the bids come in before April 1st? And, like, probably not. But the other thing was, can we, like, the numbers of the money, say they're fifteen, like, if they told us how much, they told us, we got to pay them back, right?
Yeah, so the only, the only paid-back element is the final, the final note the town has. And that is going to be, through the framework we're doing, it's going to be through the Blue Water State Revolving Fund. There's only going to be one entity that we're paying back the annual loan payments. So that, that, that is, that is the number that we will, that we will get when we have all of the pieces of the puzzle together. And that gets sort of factored into the user fees. As far as the bids go, I, I wanted to have these two years ago. As folks have seen, this project has evolved, things have changed, there's been roadblocks and hurdles. We can go into what, what were, but things got delicate. So no, we won't handle those right now, unfortunately.
Okay. And I guess, as far as we volunteered for the designation of a village community center, did we vote on that? And could we vote not to volunteer for that designation, which would then potentially remove us from the required eligibility? Like, the idea is if we have wastewater, I do believe that means we're now, we've opened the doors for the governor's initiative as far as rural development?
Yeah, so I guess, I'll just say, I don't know, this, this, this governor initiative has come up a number of times in the last few months, but I'm still not sure what the initiative is. There are these programs around designations. There were changes through Act 181 that Alyssa spoke to. So again, yeah, I'm not sure which specific initiative we're talking about. As far as the designation programs go, I don't recall, we've been a village for longer than I've been here. I don't know if the town voted out affirmatively, the town did, okay.
It was, sorry.
Nope, it's okay.
I was on the psych board when we did a village designation, and it was at town meeting. It was a Warren article, and it passed. And I believe it was just for the center, if I'm not mistaken.
It's Village End Center.
So it went through two second round, and it, and it was really about tax incentives, you know, creating favorable conditions for businesses to operate. It was up to the businesses to take advantage of those projects.
Tax incentives and also eligibility for certain grant funding programs.
Is this a point of order? Okay. May I continue?
I mean, I think we can all agree, we need a wastewater system. I think the community aspect, we all have to remember. And it's just the fear of the unknown of really, what are we opening ourselves up to by the wastewater system coming in? And I, I know everybody says, oh, you could be more transparent. I guess the idea is- I guess the idea is they're asking, what is it we don't see? Not necessarily that it's not being shown, it's just that's what I think people are really asking. So, I mean, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that has not spoken yet?
Carol Farmer. I was going to be quiet, but I just had a couple of things came up. One is, I think that we talk a lot about the governor's initiative for affordable housing. Well, he's talking about our whole state, and he wants more affordable housing in our state. Okay. I mean, I think we can't let that skew our need and the acceptance of our need for our wastewater. We're a tiny place, we don't have a lot of room to grow. And I don't think, in my own opinion, that the, that's a reason to not have the wastewater system. Fear of the unknown is, yeah, what happens if we don't do a wastewater system? Then what? That's a fear on my part as well. A fear of what happens to our businesses we already have? What happens to our river? What happens to the houses who have failing systems? Those are, to me, a much larger fear. And I had another point, which I forgot. But I would like to say that I think the project's been going on for a long time. There's so much information, there's so much information out there. I think it's on the, the job of the community citizens to find out the answers to their questions. I'm probably a lazy community member because I've lived here a very long time, and I have great respect and expectations of our select boards and our planning commission and everybody else. Everybody loves this community that's here. Nobody wants to see huge growth. Nobody in our, in our officials want to jeopardize the community we have. And I think they just, they go above and beyond to try to help us understand what is needed and how they're going to get there. And boy, it's not a job I relish. But I do want to thank them over and over again for what they do. And I think people who haven't lived here very long haven't been able to develop the trust in their community leaders that people who have lived here for a long time have been able to. Because we've been through lots of things, and we know that people can be trusted, and they're out for the best interests of our town.
Final call for anyone who has not yet spoken for the first time. Tosca, your hand was up earlier, do you still want to go first? Do you want to come up, and then Kim, you can follow Tosca?
It's well past my bedtime. I just wanted to say one thing, this is reminiscent, for me, of the water project. That took 10 years. We voted as a town, the same as we did with this project six years ago. We voted to give the select board the borrowing authority for what, $12 million, we're saying. And I didn't remember that number. But when that number came up, it just, everything clicked. And I said, you know, the water project, we had a bond vote. And the town voted to allow the select board to borrow up to, and at the time, maybe, I don't know, four or $5 million, this is years ago. And until we got anywhere near that, these projects work. So, these guys had $12 million they could borrow. Then they go out and they get the estimates, and they start working on it, and you figure it out. And that's when the grant money comes flying in. And everybody here that's against this keeps talking about having a revote. The water system, for folks that are not aware, had a huge change. We found a great source, and all of a sudden, it needed to be treated. But because we never exceeded the borrowing authority that was given to us by the voters of the community, we didn't have to revote, we were still within that limit. And these guys are too. They're telling you they've gotten this thing 95% funded by grant money. We had to put up a whole treatment center, and we still managed to do it. And we didn't have to go back to the voters because you gave us the authority. And it took 10 years. So these are not simple, okay, it changed, let's have another vote situations. They are still well within their authority to do what they're doing, no matter how much the system changes, as long as they haven't exceeded the $12 million that we voted to let them borrow. And that's all I have to say about it. I mean, these, these projects take time and they change. We had 27 change orders during the water project, 27. We never went to a revote, that's when things change. And we had to, I mean, we did it, we put it together, we got the grant funding, people want to help. And we still are paying off those bonds till 2041, you're still going to pay for the water system. This is a great deal, I don't know. I just want, I don't know if people understand how these projects work and that, once you voted to okay the bond six years ago, you gave them the authority to put a wastewater system in without exceeding that. And at least that's my experience with how these work.
Kim, and then Peter.
With the MHI, the median household income, is that based on town, county, or region?
You haven't checked that out from the most recent census with town.
Okay. And then, somebody else mentioned transparency, and I've just really been trying to be very clear and direct and have been hoping to get some very clear and direct answers in return. And I have something that maybe after the meeting I can ask specific questions and we could talk about. But the select board chairperson talked very much in detail about our designated growth centers and what is going to be a tier-one area. And talking about the municipal wastewater project is slated to break ground in the spring, 35 units of housing specifically requesting more tier-one exemptions on smaller scales that are equal, equivalent to the tier-one exemptions in larger projects. And in this document, it's all the same planned growth area designation, high-density housing, infill housing. It's all these same terms that I've been asking about, and I feel like I'm not getting clear answers on. And if, as a town, we went into this and agreed on what the future looked like, and if that's what the voters in this town want, then so be it. My only frustration is just feeling like we're not getting the clear picture. And I ask these questions and kind of get a look of, we don't know what program you're talking about, I don't understand the tier system you're talking about. And I just really feel like that's, that's not true. It's not not transparent, it's not true. And I don't have all the answers, and that's why I keep asking questions. It's because I don't want to jump to conclusions, I don't want to make assumptions. And I pore through all these legal documents, and there's stuff in there that I don't understand. And so I am asking questions because I want to know. And it baffles me, like I posted on Facebook, that other people don't necessarily seem interested to know. And it seems like it should be a decision of the townspeople, of the residents, of the voters. There was another piece that came up with Emily from regional planning. I asked her about the designation programs and the tier programs. And so maybe when it came to zoning for the village designation, that may have gone to a town vote. But I believe that she told me when it comes to the designation programs and the tier programs, that doesn't go to a town vote. That happens by meeting the requirements through zoning, through infrastructure, wastewater, and water systems. And then, like I said before, two of the programs were automatically applied for, put into, or put into for review. But the other ones, it's not a vote. It's, it's up to the municipality. So I don't know if that would be the planning commission, the select board, I, I don't know who. But it's not, I was told it's not a vote. And so I would like clarification on that, because I'm hearing two really different things there.
I'll give you a chance to respond in a moment. It sounds to me like many of the questions you're asking can be best addressed at the planning commission meeting on Tuesday at 6:00 PM by the North West Regional Planning Commission. So I just want to be really clear, what level of information you can expect based on the questions you're asking and the responses that we've already heard tonight. So I just wanted to make sure that you're clear around that opportunity as well. Charlie, you want to respond to?
Yeah, I'll just say, so, actually, I have a question, Kim. So, one question, it looked like you were reading from the document there. What was the document you were reading from that had the tier numbers that? Because that's helpful. I mean, if there's a specific document or a specific thing that we can point to and discuss, that certainly helps clarify kind of which program or what framework was involved.
I don't have cell service, so what I have is a screenshot of something that came in up with a Google search. This was testimony to the House Environment and Energy on February 1st.
That was testimony that I gave?
Yes. Charlie Hancock, chairman, Montgomery Select Board, and it says Dash Consulting Forester.
Yeah, do you know the year? I only ask because I test out for the committee a lot, and so it helped to know what bill was under discussion.
There's two and three.
Okay. Or alternatively, if you want.
No, you, no, that was 2024.
2024 testimony to that? Was it, was it Act 181 testimony? I mean, so I guess what I'll say is, if you, if you want to email me a copy of what you're reading from, I'd be happy to kind of explain what testimonies are to what I was pointing to and the rest of it, I guess. But I'm having additional context, I can't tell you what I was, what I'm talking about. So, if, if you, if you have specific documents or documents of testimony or anything, that can be very helpful to understand specificity around what question is we're talking about. So please, by all means, email me, forward me stuff, because that, that helps to have something to respond to. Because sometimes, and I, and I don't fault anybody, a lot of this stuff is really confusing, the way the programs work together and intersect and have, you know, parts of one act they can bend into a different one, right? So like, following can be difficult. And then just to the point about voting and stuff, yeah, there are certain things that the town votes on, such as the neighborhood designations. Another thing is like, for example, subdivision regulations that the planning commission would develop and adopt. I believe the select board have to approve them, but that might not go to a town vote. So there are mechanisms whereby a town can control something through the actions of a body versus voting to the full town. So the mechanisms are, are different, that's completely true.
Peter?
A couple of, couple of points from the meeting were raised. First of all, I'd like to address, after several years of work with the planning commission, I disagree with Alyssa's characterization that the regional planning board hasn't been leading us through designation or to designation. They are, Emily in particular, very helpful, very knowledgeable. But she's leading us to points that are on checklists for designations. So I was here, as well as Alyssa, and Kim may want to confirm that, you know, she's, she's heading us toward the goal that everyone was fearful of, and that's the positioning of overdevelopment, in some people's opinion. Governor Scott may disagree with that assertion. But it didn't dawn on me until questions were asked of regional planning at the planning commission meetings, and they were at least hazy answers, if answers at all. So I disagree with, with that assertion. You know, we each have our own perceptions, and they're not the same. They're not shared perceptions. My other question is on, I circle back to the money, and I appreciate Pat Farmer's comment that it's a community thing, and it is a community thing, but you can't ignore the money. And when Charlie, the select board, is asked about what would constitute killing the project, apparently there are three bram, three measuring sticks. One is hypothetical 30% over budget, and that's just a number. I understand it's not necessarily, you know, the number. But I don't even know what the budget is. So how can we gauge whether 30%, or whatever the number is, it would be nice to pin it down? How can we gauge what, how, how that number's exceeded if we don't know what the budget number is? We were at 12.7, now we're at 16. There's a state document that I saw listing towns with projects and funding, and Montgomery was listed for wastewater at 16.8. 1.8 was to be financed through the town. I'll post that, because I don't have it in my hand, but if you're interested, I'll post it. And that was before it went to 16, that document was out there. So it gives me a little bit of pause about the reliability of numbers being bandied about. I have to rely on the select board for accurate information, as, as much as they have accurate information. But there are conflicting numbers, and some of the numbers came before some, from the state, before the number came through the select board, which is bizarre in my mind. Another one is the affordability based on ratio. I would ask the select board chair if the ratio, it's fluid, he's acknowledging. He's using, I believe, 1 to 1.5, but if it's 1.7 or 2, it's not off the board. I'm, I'm wondering if the state has an affordability ratio that they use that you might want to parallel as a town. And the third one was a number of users would be a kill, kill point on the system. It would be nice to know exactly what degree of, of participation is required to maintain the viability of the project. It may be difficult to say, you know, originally, user fees were talked about 2, 300. These are just floating numbers. And I think that it's possible, or it should be possible, to pin them down to, you know, a reasonable plus-minus versus just a floating number in terms of what's budget and what exceeds it, what's affordability ratio, and what is the number of users versus the number of slots, 100 plus minus, are required to maintain the system's viability. Those are my questions.
Charlie, would you like to respond?
Yeah, so I'll, I might need some help.
Yep, I was trying to know them here. So the person on the changing budget and the fact that the budget numbers are continuing to change and there's been different numbers floating about?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, the, the project budget's changed since the echo. And it will continue to change when we get back to the bid numbers. And as far as old documents, I mean, if folks have documents that have questions on, by all means, you can email me and ask, what is this document, where did it come from, what does it mean? I do think one of the challenges with this, as far as information sharing. I do think one of the challenges with this, as far as information sharing goes, is that some things, if you're out or taking out of context and posted as being something they're not. So for example, there's this new Facebook page out there that's supposed to be some unbiased source of wastewater information. I'm not on Facebook, so I haven't seen it. But some of those screenshots that were sent to me show snippets from a power park presentation I gave five years ago, which are totally no longer accurate, or budget snippets that gap around accurate because they're five years old. So if folks have questions about information that they're seeing, we are happy to address that, talk about where it came from, whether it's accurate or not, based on current estimates or how it's changed. As far as numbers changing in cost, or users, or X, or Y, or Z, I go back to, it feeds in down into what the user fees are. And so if costs come in at one point and there's X number of users, the user fees are one number. If user fees, if the number of users change, that changes the user fees. If the costs change and the user fees still change, it's still changing. So it's kind of like if folks can think of a spreadsheet, it has a bunch of formulas where 10 different cells factor into one number. Any one of those cells changing can change that base number. And that's why what we try to say is that user rate affordability metric is what we look at.
And I'll just see if I can clarify. When you were asking about the percentage user rate, I heard Charlie say a number of times this evening is the town has a target for 1%. The state is recommending 2%. The target that the town is using for their framework is the guiding principle of affordability. And to Charlie's most recent point, that number cannot be known until the bids have been returned. Did that answer your question?
So it can possibly exceed the state's 2% to whatever.
The framework that, do you want to speak to that?
I believe that if the project was to get above 2%, the state would then say, no, y'all can't do that. We're not going to give you the money. We have to demonstrate that we've met their affordability target in order to get the money. Now that being said, the board has kind of, for ourselves, set a lower affordability target that we've been working towards. So again, the state has a ceiling that they have set. We have set a lower target to work towards than the state.
And to your question around the timing of that, I'm hearing you say that that can't be known until the bids are final because of the complex number of different factors going into that percentage. Is that accurate?
I mean, the targets that we're setting can still be the targets. It's whether or not we are reaching those targets is what we won't know until we have all the numbers in hand.
Did that answer your questions?
The question about a cap on ratio is answered very directly.
Great.
At 2%. The implication is that 30% or whatever percentage over budget, still a little hazy for me because we don't have a budget, we have an estimate.
And just.
So can I, so once again, that 30% number was just an example of a project in Vermont that when the bids came back, it was 30% over budget. I haven't seen those numbers. I don't know if they're true. It was an anecdote that was shared about a project that was either in Greensboro, maybe. And it was just an example of, we don't know until we know. We could get the bids back and it could be 50% over budget, in which case, we kind of say, well, shit, guys, you know, that probably won't work. So the 30% number is just an example of, like, things come back different. I'm not saying that it isn't 30% or 20% or 15.75% we have a hard cap. It was just an example of things come back the way they do. We don't know if they are or if they come back. So I want to make sure that 30% over budget number was just an example of how things can come back very differently than we expected to.
Does that answer your question?
No, it doesn't. My question was focused on what was budget versus the percentage. The percentage is also a floating number.
Which percentage? So the budget has been estimated and what we have now is an estimate and that's been declared.
And what's that number?
15 million is the current estimate. Or 16 million? Pardon me. 16 million is the current estimated project cost?
Again, round numbers, yeah. 16 million is current, the all-in price tag title, that's the cost of the system.
So that is the current estimate and the actual cost won't be known until the bids have been returned? Is that?
Okay.
Any more questions on that?
Yeah. Originally, it was 12.7 million.
Yes.
It went up to 16 million.
And so Charlie said that the numbers continue to change in the estimating as the project continues to evolve.
Okay.
Is there?
And that was based on what you were building.
I'm not trying to be impatient. It just has been a long time. These questions have been asked and answered a number of times, so I'm just trying to make sure.
Not to my satisfaction, and I've got, I'm up here at the mic.
Yep.
I would like to be satisfied that these budgets, if it goes to 18, does that constitute pause?
So.
And is it based on an engineer's estimate or a bid?
So what I'm hearing Charlie say is that when the bid is returned, that is the point at which the town will be able to evaluate what the cost impact is using the metric of the percentage of affordability. The town's target is 1%. The state's cap is 2%.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
So then the question that arises is, will the bid be transparent?
Oh.
Yes. The bid will be 100% transparent.
I hope so.
With all the documents online, with print on bright pink paper, stapled onto the wall. I'm not trying to hide it.
Okay. That's refreshing news to me. But.
Did that answer all of your questions?
Yeah. When are the bids expected?
Charlie?
At this point, we were hoping to have it in the beginning of July. The state threw us another curveball last week around the proper disposal of contaminated soil that we might come into and how we're going to handle that. So we had to report back with a plan as to what we do with shitty soils should we come into it. So there are things that we still are trying to address. The goal, I believe, is still to get the bids back by the beginning of July.
So this, things like the environmental concerns have delayed bids from the fall when you said you were expecting them to an interim date now to July?
Yeah. There's been any number of things that have delayed it. There was the soil passing, column testing the state forced us to do. There have been things like the disposal of soils. There have been some changes in the scope, which has changed in the bid documents in terms of certain sections that we talked about, looking at bid alternatives. So yeah, any number of things have changed and work continues to change. Like I've said, our hope initially was to have these bids back, you know, years ago. We'd rather not still be here doing this, but this is, no, I won't re-mold it.
I get it. And one last concern is these grant monies are tied to some timeframes. Are you concerned, Charlie, that these delays are getting a little too close to those timeframes?
Yeah, certainly. There are some funds in here that are still pegged to the ARPA deadline. A lot of the ARPA funds that we talked about before that were reprogrammed by the state, these eight dollars have been released to those timelines. So I don't technically have to go do a little more digging to tell you exactly which funds and how much are tied to the December 31st, 2027. But what we are doing is we have essentially a spend rate source calculation in terms of which funds do we spend first in order to meet those deadlines versus which of the more flexible funds. So we are addressing that. We have addressed it, will continue to address it. Right now, I think we have a viable path forward. There could become a point where if things get delayed and delayed and delayed, there could be elements of the funding stack that essentially tend to go bumping, like Cinderella, you know? But at this point, I think we're still on good standing.
All right. There was a date, I think of August 26th was one of them, was tied to August of 2026?
There was an August 2026 deadline, I believe, that was related to spending the money so that we had time to do the report out by the end of the year. And that was tied to ARPA funding, I believe, which is still, God, the state had reprogrammed. Yeah. There is still money in the stack which is tied to a end of 2027. And I believe the target that we've been talking about was to have that spent by August, end of August, so that we would have time to essentially do all the bookwork, to have all the reports done by the deadline that the state's, or the feds have set for us.
All right. It's an enormous amount of data. It's not unusual not to have it all in your head at one time on request. I get that. And I appreciate your efforts to recall as best as you can. But these were my concerns. Thank you very much.
Did your question get answered?
I'm done. Yeah, I'm finished.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? You may have one more shot at the mic.
I think Peter might have been getting at, is there a top number at which this cuts off? Or does, you know, is there a certain, 18 million, 20 million? Is there a number?
So what I've heard Charlie say is that there is not a set number that is a go or no-go number. We need to get the bids back. And because of all the various factors that go into that, including whether we get grants, whether the grants expire, so on and so forth, that it is the affordability rate is what is going to determine that, not whether there is a specific max number that is a go or no-go. That's what I've heard repeated multiple times this evening.
Okay. I just want that cleared up.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. Any further questions or comments for this evening? Going once. Going twice. Everyone on Zoom?
Has left.
That's left? Lauren, if you would like to speak, this is your opportunity. Hearing no other requests to speak, we're going to close this hearing. Thank you all very much for being present this evening and participating. I'm going to give us two reminders. For those of you that have questions relating to planning, zoning, and the like, there is a planning commission meeting at 6:00 PM at the Public Service Building. There will be a representative from Northwest Regional Planning. We would encourage you to attend that meeting and ask your questions directly related to planning and zoning. And the vote will be held by ballot under typical election rules on April 1st. Thank you so much.